I apologize for being late tonight. I do apologize. Tonight, we actually have two, we have a quick board meeting up front because we are attending officers. It takes a couple of minutes and then we actually go into the second board meeting. So you're actually going to be sitting through two board meetings tonight.
Okay, let's get rolling. I'd like to call to order the organization meeting in the Penn Trafford School District, December 7th, 2015, at 7:00 L.A. So, the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Lego, please take roll call for you. Mrs. Issing.
Here.
Mr. Pachasik.
Here.
Dr. Koschko.
Here.
Mr. Leonard.
Here.
Mr. Neiman.
Here.
Mr. Petrusi.
Here.
Mr. Stovar.
Here.
Dr. Trey.
Here.
You have a form, Mr. President, and Mr. Matarazzo will get you next time since you're not a board member yet. Thank you, Mr. Lego.
You're welcome.
At this time, I'd like to appoint myself as temporary care person for the organization meeting. And in case, we'll talk to you over here, Dr. Harris.
Sure, and actually, tonight, we're very lucky to have District Judge Helen Kessler. She is here tonight to read the certificates of elections, do the oath of office, and read the list of due directors.
You're just going to have them come up in front and have the oath, or would you like me to read the, would you want me to read the?
If you could read the certificate of elections, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Certificate of election, we the undersigned members of the County Board of Elections of said county hereby certify that after tabulating the votes cast at the municipal election held on the third day of November 2015, in said county, it appears that Philip B. Kachasik was duly elected to the office of school director for a term of four years for Penn Trafford Region 3 School District in the county after said, and it is signed by the County Board of Elections Director, James Montini. Are we doing these individually this way again, or?
Read the certificates first, then you can do it once more again. I think that's rather easy.
Okay, and the second certificate of election, we the undersigned members of the County Board of Elections of said county hereby certify that after tabulating the votes cast at the municipal election held on the third day of November 2015, in said county, it appears that Scott Koscho was duly elected to the office of school director for a term of four years for the Penn Trafford Region 1 School District in the county after said, County Board of Elections Director, James Montini. Certificate of election, we the undersigned members of the County Board of Elections of said county hereby certify that after tabulating the votes cast at the municipal election held on the third day of November 2015, in said county, it appears that Dallas W. Leonard was duly elected to the office of school director for a term of four years for Penn Trafford Region 2 School District in the county after said, County Board of Elections Director, James Montini. Certificate of election, we the undersigned members of the County Board of Elections of said county hereby certify that after tabulating the votes cast at the municipal election held on the third day of November 2015, in said county, it appears that James Matarazzo was duly elected to the office of school director for a term of four years for Penn Trafford Region 3 School District in the county after said, County Board of Elections Director, James Montini. Certificate of election, we the undersigned members of the County Board of Elections of said county hereby certify that after tabulating the votes cast at the municipal election held on the third day of November 2015, in said county, it appears that Nick A. Petrusi was duly elected to the office of school director for a term of four years for Penn Trafford Region 1 School District in the county after said, County Board of Elections Director, James Montini.
(inaudible)
Probably for the cameras, so.
No.
Repeat after me. Aye, speak your name.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties.
I will discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
So small. Thank you. If you take a look on the next page.
Yes.
Do they keep their certificates of election? You want them to keep the certificates?
Did you sign, you have to sign them?
I, well, I have the.
Oh, yeah, they get the certificates of election, you sign the other ones, please.
I will, I don't have my sale with me, so I'll stamp and sell them and bring them back.
That's fine. Thank you very much. There's some, there's some more, that's all.
That's it.
Yeah, there's just one.
Did you take it?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's it?
I'll get them back to you.
Appreciate it very much. Yeah.
Do you want to teach me the offering?
We have copies that we will post in the administration building. Those are yours to keep. We already made those. Okay, moving on, the chair will now accept nominations for the office of president. I nominate Nick Petrusi for president. Nick Petrusi nominated by Mr. Stovar. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? May I have a motion to close the nominations?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Kachasik.
Second.
Second by Mr. Koschko. If there are no objections, the chair will conduct a vote, voice vote. All those in favor of Nick Petrusi for president say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Mr. Petrusi has been elected president for 2016. Congratulations, Mr. Petrusi. Thank you. Mr. Neiman, you've very fine job. Very fine job. Thank you.
See, can you keep up with it?
I'll do. It'll be difficult.
Well, keep it a good eye, Nick, since you don't have much experience.
How many years is this for you, Mr. Petrusi? I'm completing number 36.
Thirty-six year school board members.
Thank you for your honest support. Very kind of you. Okay, now, next on the agenda, I'm entertaining a motion for the Chair of Vice President.
Shall I nominate Marty Stovar?
Motion for Marty Stovar. Are there any nominations? Are there any nominations? Are there any nominations? May I motion to close the nominations for Vice President?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Kachasik, and a second motion.
Mr. Leonard.
Mr. Leonard. Second by Mr. Leonard. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Upstayed.
Congratulations, Mr. Petrusi. May I motion to establish the date, time, and place of regular monthly board meetings and superintendent information meeting for 2016. Establish date, time, place, and regular monthly board meeting, superintendent information committee for 2016, and the date, time, as listed on the agenda. I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Kachasik, and a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Koschko. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. The board meeting scheduled for Monday, February 1st, 2016, will be held in Advanced Technology Center in WCC, located 1,001 Technology Drive, Mount Pleasant, PA. This is the old, originally Volkswagen building, and we had our boot tech meeting there about three months ago. And anybody who wishes to come to our meeting, we're going to have a tour for the board, and if you come to the meeting and you're just a Penn Trafford citizen, you're welcome to come along with us. I think you will find the facility is very impressive, very clean. How big it is, it's a mile and three quarter if you walked your way around it, so you know how big it's going to be, and it's well worth seeing. It's February 1st is the date, and it's an open meeting for our information meeting. You're more than welcome to attend and come along with us and ask questions. It's very impressive. Okay, may I have the motion to authorize the Secretary of the Board and School Directors, Brett Lego, to use the vacillary signature of Nick Petrusi, new elected president of Board and School Directors, to further authorize the secretary to file the required documents for Department of Education?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Neiman, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Leonard. Any question on motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. May I motion to appoint Dr. PJ Trey as the district superintendent, council representative, and Mrs. Toni Issing as the alternate representative?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Kachasik.
Second.
Second by Mr. Leonard. Any question on motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. May I motion to appoint Dr. PJ Trey as the district superintendent, council representative, and Mrs. Toni Issing as the alternate representative?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Kachasik.
Second.
Second by Mr. Koschko. Any question on motion?
Yes.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Motion for adjournment?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Koschko, and a second.
Seven.
Second, Mrs. Issing, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to adjourn. Our executive session, while we were approximately 10 minutes late, litigation matters, sale and purchase of property, personnel matters, regarding evaluations, arbitration matters, and various personnel issues. The board also met to receive information regarding the PIA classification changes, which is, if you haven't read the papers lately, there's no more as your 4A, there are now 6A, starting effective next year, and I'm sure you've looked in the paper. Penn Trafford football is going to be 5A, and then basketball, and baseball, too, I think we're 6A, I could be wrong with that, yeah, we're 6A there. That'll be in the paper, but it's worth reading, and you know how strong our boys did this year, a great season, and we always placed with, not with the real big boys, but we're pretty far, we're 5As compared to being the 6A, which that means we're pretty big. And there are 13 6A class, 6A schools in the new classification setup. There were construction change orders we discussed, high school curriculum we discussed, and the status of the state budget, which you know as well as everyone else knows, is still unsettled. Okay, roll call, Mr., please, please have a place, ladies. Roll call, what's your sound? No, no, let's do the roll call. You want to do the roll call, okay, things have changed, you're correct. Roll call, Mr. Lego. Yes, sir, Mr. President. Mrs. Issing.
Here.
Mr. Kachasik.
Here.
Dr. Koschko.
Here.
Mr. Leonard.
Here.
Mr. Matarazzo.
Here.
Mr. Neiman.
Here.
Mr. Petrusi.
Here.
Mr. Stovar.
Here.
Dr. Trey.
Here.
You have a form, Mr. President.
Okay, nobody left?
Okay, we have Dr. Kessler. I'd like to entertain a motion for approval missed for their November 9th, 2015 meeting.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Kachasik. Second by Mr. Dr. Trey. Any question? Any question by Mr. Neiman, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Okay, information, Dr. Harris.
Thank you. But first, we're going to start off with our student union representative, Trent Stone.
Thanks, Dr. Harris. As you know, one of my goals was to increase communication between the school about construction to the students, and over the past couple of weeks, some stairwells have been closed without informing the students whatsoever, and so we've had to adjust our schedules without any prior knowledge before, so we kind of just showed up to the stairwell, it was closed, and then we had to back around and go across the school in order to get to our class. So if there's any possible way that there will be, stairwells are always closed due to construction, if you could put it on the announcements or something like that, we would greatly appreciate that. And the keystone testing added to the confusion. Other than that, I don't have anything, our students are busy at CAP, and we are ready for winter break. Any questions? All right.
Next, we want to get to our favorite time of the month, and that's when we honor all the students of the month, and we're going to start off with our elementary school and our elementary school principal. You guys have two different schools, so which one are you going to do first?
I would do Trafford Elementary. Andrew Rutter, Andrew, come on up front, buddy.
I would like to introduce Andrew Rutter as this month's elementary student of the month. Andrew is a fifth grade student in Mr. Martinelli's class at Trafford Elementary. Andrew is the son of Terry and RJ Rutter, who are here with us in the back, and he is also the younger brother to Shelby Rutter. I believe Shelby's not here, correct?
Yes, she wants to stay home.
Shelby is a seventh grade student at Trafford Middle School. Talking with Andrew, he enjoys spending time building, creating a variety of objects with his Legos, as well as playing Minecraft, as he talks about the majority of the time. Andrew says he likes when his imagination takes over and new objects are created. Andrew says he enjoys attending Trafford Elementary, he likes all of his subjects and being around his friends. Andrew says his teachers are really nice and helpful, and know how to make the day interesting. Andrew has made great gains in the past few years while at Trafford Elementary, and we are very proud of him. Mrs. Chesky, the school librarian, states Andrew is a kind-hearted student with an engaging personality and terrific sense of humor. Andrew displays natural public speaking and storytelling ability, leaving his audience waiting, wanting to hear more. Andrew listens attentively, asks thoughtful questions, and is eager to learn and shows a genuine interest in others. His respectfulness and positive attitude make him a wonderful role model. Mr. Martinelli, his homeroom teacher, says Andrew has made many positive strides towards having a successful fifth grade school year. He's a very well-mannered boy with a positive attitude. He doesn't hesitate to ask questions, and if he doesn't understand something, he doesn't hesitate to allow fellow classmates, if they need help as well. He's a hard worker, and he's eager to learn. Finally, Andrew said he is excited for the holidays, as well as the new Star Wars movie that will be released on December 18th, as he informed me many times. I asked him if he was going, and he looked me dead in the eye and says, "Of course I am." Andrew, may the force be with you, buddy, and we are very proud, and congratulations on being this month's student of the month.
Star Wars, I enjoyed it myself.
I have all the movies.
Oh, that's great, that's great. Congratulations, Andrew Rutter, for being selected student of the month, Trafford Elementary School for the month of December 2015. Great job, young man.
Thank you.
Okay, moving up the street 3.5 miles away, we have Kate Mallie. Come on up, Kate. It gives me great pleasure to introduce Kate Mallie of Level Green Elementary as this month's student of the month. Kate is a fifth grade student as well, in Mrs. Brillier's class. She is the daughter of Stephanie and Patrick Mallie, who are here with us as well, and is also the sister to Bridget, who is a junior at Seton Hill University, Colleen, who is a freshman at Seton Hill University, and Grace, who's a third grade student at Level Green Elementary University. Kate is an outstanding student. She is a part of our Spectrum program and enjoys such activities as acting, theater, and singing. Kate has participated in many plays at the Trafford Theater, and currently has a major role in the Level Green Presbyterian Church play, Out of the Box Christmas, which is a play about a play, and Kate plays the director of the play. That's about a play. Who's Mrs. Strickland. She's very excited to perform in the next few weeks. Ms. Kelly, Kate's third grade teacher, a few years ago, when she had Kate, that's whenever they first came to Level Green, she said, "I had Kate." When she first came to Level Green, she got along with everyone in the class and was quickly everyone's friend. She enjoyed doing our dance-offs at recess time. She still is one of the best third grade writers that I've ever had in my classroom, and is such a positive influence on her peers. I would take 18 Kate Malleys in my classroom any day, and glad to have my second Malle this year, which is Grace, who is in Ms. Kelly's classes also. Other staff members have stated Kate is a hard-working and dedicated student. Kate's determination and work ethic are demonstrated in everything she does. She puts tremendous effort, careful thought, and imagination into her schoolwork. Kate is self-disciplined, responsible, and respectful. Her integrity is something to be proud of. We cannot say enough about Kate. She is an excellent student, and more importantly, she is thoughtful and caring of others. Congratulations, Kate, on being this month's student of the month. I want to say that your dad grew up with my son, and your Aunt May grew up with my daughter, okay, and your grandparents, super-nice people, live in the street down below, very easy to get along with, and you come from a very good family. Congratulations, too.
We have Mr. Solomon from Trafford Middle School.
Thanks, Dr. Harris. I'd like to introduce you, Josh Zigorovich. Josh is an eighth grade student at Trafford Middle School, and he's here with his mother and father, Mr. and Mrs. Zigorovich. Josh is a quiet kid, but ultra-focused, ultra-focused on school. In fact, when I called him down to my office to congratulate him and tell him that he was this month's student of the month, he thanked me, he took out his hand and shook my hand, and then said, "Okay, thanks, I got to get back to class." Which I said, "No, no, sit down, we have to talk some." Then when I talked to his father, he said the same thing, that Josh is just very focused on school. It's important to him. So it comes to no surprise that Josh is a higher honors student and has been a very good student at Trafford Middle School, these three years there. He's currently taking two advanced classes, advanced geometry being one of them, one of the more rigorous classes in the school. He currently has a 101 percent. His other grades are spectacular, a couple 99s, I think his lowest grade is a 96. Very strong student academician. Outside of school, he enjoys playing baseball, basketball, and exercising. Last year, he played basketball for the school, and this year, he plans on participating on the track team. He also enjoys heading out with his friends, as long as he's being active, he's happy. Josh said right now, he plans on being an accountant, that's what his interests are, but knows that he wants to do something with numbers, as math is his favorite subject. His teachers say the following things about him, that he's a leader, always respectful, willing to show when he doesn't understand something and asks for clarification. I think that's big for an eighth grader. Always takes thinking to the next level. I have not had a student of Josh's caliber in a while. He participates fully in his education. Another comment, he participates regularly in class and contributes with information on discussions that are outside of class content on a consistent basis. Josh is dominating the class with his participation. Josh always volunteers for answers. He will always ask questions that other students are afraid to ask. He's looking for a grasp of the concept. He shows a desire to learn, and he's the type of student that every class needs to have. Josh, congratulations, stay focused. We appreciate you being a student at Trafford Middle School.
Just so you know, Josh's grandfather taught, Steve taught in this building. I used to deliver his great-grandparents' paper, Post-Graduate in the morning, up next to Trafford Elementary School, and I taught your grandmother my first year ever taught, and you had, and Pat, too, I've been great together. Okay, to Josh, congratulations, too.
Thank you.
And Colleen from our high school, we have Mr. Recoia.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. The high school student of the month for December is 11th grade student Jessica Deut. Jessica goes above and beyond the regular excellence of academics that you see in high school so often. Pat Lahobich, our school nurse and our CAP program manager, says Jessica has a kind and giving heart. She is responsible and follows to you in all of her commitments. She is always willing to volunteer for whatever needs to be done. Jessica is sincere in her efforts, as it's never about her, but always about the greater cause. Jessica's involvement is quite intensive, as she focuses on giving to others. Just to list some of the things that she's involved in the school, treasurer of both astronomy club, as well as the CAP program, which is our community action program, where all of our volunteers come from, the vice president of the student union, which organizes all of the class activities, chair of the Special Olympics Committee, as well as chair of the ABYS project, which she worked with our life skills students on a project for the intensive care unit at Children's Hospital by making care packets for the patients and parents. She is also a member of the National Honor Society and is very active in her church. A few of the teachers had the following to say about her. Mrs. Shula, her AP English teacher, Jess is very vivacious. She is willing, willingly engaged in even the toughest readings during class. She even created a group to promote equal rights between the sexes, called the Feminist Company. She's an exuberant presenter, bringing everyone along with her on the quest for education and knowledge. She is a student from whom I learn on a daily basis, and her energy recharges me. She helps others, always keeps a positive attitude, and works hard every day without ceasing. Mrs. Fallon, our chemistry teacher, says, "I've been fortunate to have Jess for two years in a row. Once in my Chem 1 class, and again this year in Chem 2. She's a great kid and a really good student. Jess has a great attitude towards just about everything in life. She is always in a good mood and comes to class every day ready to give her her best shot, her best effort. Jess has a unique sense of humor, and would much rather make fun of herself than make fun of others. She's a favorite with her classmates and her teachers as well." Mrs. Albo, from our world language Spanish teacher, says, "I have the honor of having Jessica in my eighth period Spanish 3 honors class every day. She is the model student that one would want to have in her, in their classroom. She never complains and smiles for every single assignment. She is always willing to lend a helping hand when a fellow student needs help on her classroom. I consider myself lucky this year to have her in my class." And finally, I talked to her brother, Aaron, who Jess also has an older brother, Alex, who I think is at Ohio State and graduated last year, very involved. Aaron had a few things to say about his sister as well, just so you know, Aaron, you do have some pretty, pretty big shoes to fill, both your brother and sister. Aaron, who's ninth grade, had this to say. "One of the best things about my sister's character is the influence it has had on me. As a ninth grade student, I had a lot of important decisions to make at the beginning of this school year, what classes to take, what clubs to join, how should I approach this new school. My sister helped me through all of this. She told me to take honors classes, the hardest classes, because it's important to challenge myself, or challenge yourself as the best student you can be. She also urged me to join CAP, because she said the community service is the best way to help your own town and give back to its residents. Overall, she taught me that high school gives you so many opportunities to be your best and help your community. As principal, I can't say enough about Jessica, and all that she does is a role model that we want all of our students at Penn Trafford High School to be, both academically and socially. She puts others first, making this world a better place. Congratulations to her and her family."
Good volunteer work, buddy, that's very nice. Don't change anything. Congratulations, too.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Now, her brother, actually, did he win two years ago?
See, I remember.
Can I share one other thing, too? With this CAP program that she's so valued at, just got a note today from one of our, one of the organizations, the VA Hospital we donate to, and it says, "Hello, student staff and parents. On behalf of myself and my fellow veterans, I want to sound out a heartfelt thank you for everyone that took part in the donation drive for the VA Hospital. After everything was donated, the total came to $9,527, which was the highest donation in western Pennsylvania. This donation will go a long way to help our veterans in need. Sometimes, thank you just doesn't seem to be enough. You all should be proud of all the work you've done. Thanks." Michael Del Harty, the volunteer services, so, just one of the examples of the students along with Jessica to do for this, for the community. So, thank you again.
And actually, we're going to take a few moments to have our students of the month get a picture for the press. If they can come up front, that would be our, lovely background. Congratulations. 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 And if family wants to come up and get pictures, go for it, y'all. The family wants to come up and get pictures, go for real.
Or you're more than welcome to leave. I don't think we've ever had a family stay, so... But thank you so much and enjoy your evening.
Next, we have building update, I'm going to have Mr. Engrais.
I have Hank and Renee here from Axis and Masero, they'll give the update. I just want to say a few things relative to the schedule. The auditorium is, a lot of work has been done the last couple of weeks and we're getting close to being done with the auditorium. We're shooting for early January. The seating is being installed right now, the flooring is going down in the other areas. So we still need a couple more weeks in there, but we think that we'll be able to turn it over. They'll be able to turn over the school in early January, which coincides with when our musical production starts and we can get the practice going in there. So I will look forward to that. Any other area that I want to update you on is our gymnasium, the annex area. We do have a setback there. The concrete there is still too moist to lay the wood floor down. In order to lay the wood floor down, you have to have a moisture content of 85% or less. We're hovering around 90% right now, so we're trying to dry it out. We're doing some testing again this week to see if it's dropped a little bit so we can get the flooring installed there. So once that drops at 85%, we'll get the flooring in and hopefully get that area done. There has been significant progress in there as well. I would anticipate that's probably closer towards the end of January is my guess, maybe early February, but it's just hard to say. We don't know when the moisture content will be ready for us to start the flooring, so... After that, I'll let you two handle the rest. You got it Renee? Hank?
Steve, where'd you put them?
Okay, you want to start her on?
You can.
Okay, the construction update, as Scott said, talked about the auditorium a little bit. We do have the reflective sound panel installation complete. For those of you who miss Scott's weekly joke about being partly cloudy in the auditorium, it is full-on cloudy right now, so I'm sorry you're missing that one. The lighting is complete, the stage ramp is complete. They are going to have to get the handrail installed back there. And other than that, like Scott said, the flooring's going down, the seating's, the seats are going in. The audioan door that we are replacing has been installed. They started getting the patching done of the wall where they had to take out the old one. Let's see, oh, the wall, the sound wall panels, those are the panels that are going to go on the wall along both sides of the auditorium, those have started. The stage rigging is now complete and lights and ceiling grid are complete in the audioan. It kind of looks really nice in there. On the second floor, we are still continuing some punch lists of some areas from this last summer. The guidance area, the demolition is complete. We did have to replace the beam in there, that is now in place. All the roughing, being plumbing and electrical, that is now complete. I'm happy to report that preschool, the new one, is now turned over. They are in there with the exception of the stone cap and the ornamental fencing that's going on the outside of the playground.
And the, I believe the stone cap was completed today and the ornamental fencing is supposed to be going this week. We shall see.
Sorry, I lost my... Oh, as Scott said, the annex gym flooring, we are having some moisture issues and the GC is trying to take care of that right now. We have, in the new locker rooms, which was, which were your old wrestling room, all the ceilings are in there, are complete. The drywall finishing has started and you got about 75, I'm sure it's more than that today, but as of Friday, it was 75% completed of all the ceiling grid in that area. Your fitness center, all of the painting is complete, all your electrical roughing is complete and now we're just waiting for the floor installation.
And they've started that, but it's not complete yet.
In the TV studio, which was the old preschool, demolition has started and as you all know, once we get approval of the change order request, we can go ahead and get that work going, get the beam ordered that's going to have to go in there. And as far as site, probably what's new since last month is the auditorium parking lot's done with the exception of striping that has to be done. The new tennis court parking lot's complete, again with the exception of striping. And we did, the GC did perform a temporary parent drop-off over here on the end and the completion of that will be later on down the road. And the electrical contractor has finished all the exterior building lights and I'm sure everybody has noticed how much brighter it is out there.
The change orders that are on the agenda for approval this month amount to $50,018.07. There are several, they were adding some exhaust fans in the chemistry area. We're adding a, what's called an Aphone, it's a, it's a security system portion at the nurse's entrance to allow you to, allow a visitor to call in and let the nurse open the door remotely. There's a, we have a deduct change order, we're reducing some of the amount of glass that's going in the cafeteria corridor walls. The gymnasium decorative line stripe we did, but it ended up being a zero cost change. That actually looks nice, it's finished now. If everybody is down that area, they can take a look at that. The auditorium lobby entrance one, that's one of the larger ones, we're going to, that's a not to exceed number. The construction manager is going to track that one and like they tracked the wall that we had to rebuild at the annex, we feel that this number will be lower as that one was. This is, so this will be a not to exceed number. This was an area that, when they started the construction and they, it's, it was that exterior sidewalk space that's under a roof out there and we were making it an interior space. When they went to install the glass storefront on there, it came to the realization that that slab is not level. It was sunken in and sloped out. And so this is work that has to do to make that level so that the storefront will work and the flooring can be installed. There's another one here is a stage void infill. That one we feel should be substantially less than that. That's another one that we're asking for approval tonight and we'll do it T and M not to exceed and it should, it should come in much lower than that number. Then there's the TV studio beam ad that was discussed and some, some small things. There was an existing sewer line that was damaged that needs to be replaced that was found and some return air grills in the auditorium. Like again, the total was just over $50,000 this month. It puts the total contingency at $467,000, $468,000. We're well within the total allotted and we don't see any issues coming up that would make us go over our, your allotted contingency numbers. Are there any questions with any of those?
Yes, this is two months in a row with $50,000. It's a trend here. If we head toward the final, I expect to see these numbers as large as they are, so what's your feeling? What's going on? Coming in January or is it a large build? You were actually looking to make it, to have some of that money left over to do other things and it isn't there to use up totally, so I just wanted to get your take on what's going on.
My take on it is that these, a lot of these were numbers that are, that the paperwork is catching up with and so we've had two months of substantial numbers in a row here. I don't see that continuing. We're looking at some deduct change orders for next month. I don't know if the total of next month will be a deduct, but it shouldn't, at this point should not be in that range. And I don't see a lot of that coming down the road. Time will tell, but I believe the last two months were a lot of makeup, paperwork things from my end that had been out there.
And as far as Masero, how far in advance are you looking at things coming down the road to see? How far, when do you notice stuff like this? Is it months in advance? Maybe you can give us more of a heads up as far as these, these large numbers? You see what I'm asking? You know what's coming down the project. How far in advance are you guys planning for that with the general so you can find stuff like this? Do you want us to know?
Knowing that it was a very fast-paced summer, our project team didn't have the time to really dive in to find out all of the future work that's going to be going on. However, the project team we have now, knowing that it is starting to slow down, we are starting to get more into the drawings on work that is to be completed month, even this summer. And we're looking at that right now to make sure that we have all the ducks in a row rather than, okay, being proactive rather than reactive. So hopefully, I mean...
At this point in time, how far out have you looked and do you see any larger numbers like this coming down the road?
As an example, Phil, we're going to start demoing the kitchen area this summer and we've already looked at the drawing extensively there and we've already seen some issues there that we may have to deal with. So they are already looking at some of the summer work right now and trying to figure out if there are any issues that are going to come up. And sometimes we won't know until we really get into that area. Is that fair to say?
Typically, yes, but what we're trying to do now is trying to look at the work that's going to be happening this summer and planning for it now rather than in April, May or June. So we're doing that now.
Obviously, further in advance you find things like this, it's, it gives us more flexibility as far as what we can do. A lot of times when something comes up as a change order, we have no recourse but to allow the general on site to move ahead and do that because we're backed up against time. Given some time, we might be able to actually get some of this, we're allowed to do that Mike, we would actually be allowed to get some of this quoted rather than, you know, just to see. That's just my opinion. Can you see what I'm asking? Yeah.
We do have, Masero is maintaining an exposure log, so there's a number of items that are kind of out there that could potentially be costly to the district. So those are, those are identified and listed and we can certainly get you a copy of that.
I don't know about the rest of the work, but I'd love to see stuff like that.
I have no problem. It is something that I reviewed. It is provided in addition to, we are going back looking at some of the answers, some of the questions that have been answered where credit should have been given and have yet not, or have yet been given. So that's something I'm also tracking out right now.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd just like to say with El Nino giving us so far a very warm December, is there a completion? Is this enhancing our timeframe for completion? Are we still headed for September? Is our goal for...
I think right now, the biggest hurdle that we have is the kitchen. We are trying to see if there's a possibility of getting that area sooner.
There are a lot of unforeseen items in there that we'd like to tackle now rather than later. That way we can ensure that come August, the kids are going to be able to have food. So we're still on track.
As Renee said, the biggest issue is the kitchen. If we can get that resolved, we are looking at taking over that kitchen area at the beginning of March as a fourth option. And if we do that, the kids will be provided with a limited lunch selection. We offer lunches, but would be scaled back because we wouldn't have a full kitchen, we'd have a modified kitchen. If we do that, take it over in March, we, the contractors feel much more comfortable in getting the project done by the end of August.
Is that for your outside work, is that enhancing outside work in warm weather?
There's not much left in the outside, there's not much exterior work to do.
There's machines.
There's not much left on the outside. Things are left on the outside or summer work, we have to do some more grading and some type of grass.
Rating and that type of thing. So they're, so we have the luxury of being dried in everywhere where the additions are. So the weather's, although we've had a nice, nice fall here, it hasn't affected the schedule because we didn't need the nice weather because we were already dried in.
Yes, sir.
The middles have been...
They are approved. I've spoken with Todd Devon because usually they are, I hate to say this, the weakest link. So I have already started conversations with them now. They do, they, all the equipment has been ordered. They were asking a couple of questions regarding color selections. We're still trying to work that out right now, but other than that, everything's ordered. We're trying to get them to get it here.
Yeah, if you plan on moving, yeah, well, that's not going to stop. You're going to close the kitchen down even though you don't have the equipment board?
Demo the existing kitchen and recreate a modified kitchen in the existing cafeteria, which is some coolers and a sink and just to do things like that.
The exposure list that you referred to?
Yes.
Are there any great big items on there? I mean, what kind of money amount are you looking at on this exposure list? At your best guess? And I know it's just, it's early and it's a guess. Tough question?
I'm going to say you're rounding about $60,000 right now.
Okay.
To put it in perspective, we're, the contingency set aside change orders was what almost, almost 1.3 million were 70% to the project and more than 460, 470,000.
And some of that is taken off. Like I said, out of the 50,000 this month, it's probably going to, after the T and M work, it'll probably be more like 40,000. The wall was 20,000, about 20,000 under what was approved. So, you know, there's money coming off of that. So as far as where we are with contingency, we're doing very, very well. Much better than I had actually hoped for.
We didn't present the wall in the gymnasium that was, looked like it was going to fall over and we told you that that was going to cost somewhere around $65,000 or $70,000. That was the estimate and we're getting a number, it's done now, we're getting numbers in the mid 40s for that. So that's, but we still have to approve that change order, that will be coming next month.
Well, that's what I mean, like Phil's mentioned, you know, now we're, we used to get like $16,000, $20,000 a month, now we're looking at $50,000 a month. So that's a little scary. That can get you a lot closer to our limit to keep that pace up.
Any else calendar?
Any other questions for more members here?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. School calendar, we're going to improve that tonight. It almost looks identical to last year's. Our first day of school, Thursday, August 25th, which is still seven days before Labor Day. We're through the two days plus the five day, four days of a week. Our last day is May 26th, which is a Friday before... Our last day is May twenty-sixth, which is a Friday before Memorial Day. It does look different because of Christmas falling, December twenty-third is a Friday, that's usually our last day off. Of course, we got the whole week there, so a little bit different, but not any big changes. Program of studies for the high school, we're gonna actually hold off on that this month and we're gonna actually talk about that next month as you approve it. We have more details on some information. And PTAR, we had a PTAR meeting this evening. We're gonna discuss some of the things at the PTAR meeting, Mr. Pucci or...
Well, things that we hit on was the, took a little time was the appointing, first of all, trying to change, change the time from four o'clock on Monday because one community in particular had a hard time getting people to come. And the other small community also, they don't wanna change because it meets their schedule. So we, that's a standstill right now. We're trying to discriminate some wording between official and representative and it's, we gotta get a neutral, we have different solicitors giving different opinions on who to appoint for different communities. And one says they like, they have no problem with the way it is right now and another one, they're making a little bigger stipulations. But we're very healthy. We're eleven thousand dollars ahead of last year as far as our fund balance goes and Linda Byers is doing a very good job.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of good events we've been having and really enjoyed.
Participation is very high.
There's a lot of great ideas, which is great. And one of her goals was to get more people taking classes because the more people who are taking classes, not only benefits them, but also benefits PTAR and the whole township.
She's full of energy. Very hard worker.
And in addition to that, we also have two of our township commissioners, Mr. Harrison and Mr. Worthing. I know they signed up for the district. I also asked if they were willing to come and speak to the board.
You wanna come together, you can speak together individually, it's whatever you feel comfortable. Okay.
Thank you for your time, Dr. Harris. Chairman Pucci, congratulations everybody, all the school board there, you guys, congratulations. Our quick Christmas wish for this year is disposition of the PTAR building. And everyone on this board has probably dealt with that over the past year. We have, we've had conversations offline with school board members, we've talked to Dallas. Dr. Harris, we met with you, Mr. Nemec and your solicitor, met with our solicitor, but collectively, no one's been able to come together on an agreement on what to do with this building. Right now, the last move we made was put it back into municipal use. We had some potential ideas for it, but they may not come to fruition. The building has a legacy. Originally, it was intended to run many projects out of that and Nick, you probably remember some of that. We were gonna move the PTAR people there, their offices, and that never happened despite putting thousands of dollars into that place and thousands of dollars of, or thousands of hours of work from our municipal public works, Bruce Light staff.
Both there.
Never quite worked out that, that way. So both that, right. So right now, we're at a point where I think it's important to get that building back on the tax rolls in the community. The, it's a benefit to the school district and to the township. It's a prime piece of property. You've all had an estimate, I guess, or appraisal of the property, it's probably worth close to a quarter million dollars the way it sets. The taxes on that, Larry has some numbers he can run by you, what that would generate just as it sets now for the township and the school district. But we would like to have some type of, we're not asking for an answer tonight, obviously, because there's a lot of variables in this and a lot of different ideas, but to have a, and I won't be on the board next year, but this is, I'm a lame duck, so I'm here preaching for the next generation of commissioners, next year's commissioners, but a representation of the township with the school board and some serious talk about getting this thing put back on the tax rolls, whether it's selling it and coming up with the, the problem on our board right now is recouping the loan money that we have, forty-something thousand dollars, Larry?
Yes, about forty-six thousand.
Our board wants to recoup, recoup that forty-six thousand because we've been paying on it, the parking lot's been paid, a lot of work's gone into it. So whatever sale price is agreed on, we'll have to, you know, decide how we're gonna do that with paying off the loan. That seems to be the sticking point with a lot of people. So that's, I'm opening it up for Larry. Larry, if you wanna come up and add to that, he's gonna be here next year, it's gonna be his baby, it's gonna be one of those balls in the air that hopefully doesn't hit the grind. So, Mr. Harrison, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Paul.
Again, congratulations to all the re-elected and newly-elected school directors.
And you also.
And certainly a big hello to all your school directors, administration personnel, solicitors sitting down there in the end. Sean, been a while since I've been in this little group of people. As Paul said, you know, we're trying to work with, with the school directors, the school board to put a piece of property back on the tax rolls. That property has not been assessed since, back, like, last time it was assessed was when it was a Penn Area Public Library. It had a value assessment of forty-three thousand dollars. Even at that low assessment, that gives to the school board or the school district about thirty-four hundred dollars a year. Now, if, you know, if that piece of property, as Paul said, is, is a pretty valuable piece of property and if it can be sold and developed, certainly that assessment is gonna go far above forty-three thousand dollars. And it's gonna be many more dollars coming back into the school district as well as the township. And I, anyone here who says they don't need money, I don't think you wanna run for reelection the next time we're on. So let's try to work together and find a way to make this happen. There was some miscommunication, egos or something that got in the road in the past. I'd like to think we could all forget about that and start anew. And I would ask or suggest if we could to appoint a three-person committee from the school board, a three-person committee from the township and sit down and work out a process by which we can get this property back on the tax rolls and keep everyone, all the interested parties financially whole. There should be no reason that can't be done. Keeping in mind, school district and the township, we're taking money out of the taxpayers' pockets, the same taxpayers in the township. Is there any reason that we can't save some money, get rid of that loan, put the, put the property back on the, on the tax rolls and make it produce? I think if you ask any taxpayer in the township, they would say, why haven't you already done it?
Can I interrupt, Larry? Can I ask, can I ask a question?
You can ask all kinds of questions. I only hope I can answer them.
Back, back in July, the school district sent a proposal to the commissioners and we proposed that we would take back the building, we would pay off the loan, and the only thing is we, we would take out the payback of the loan from our registration fees with PTAR over a term of five years. Now, Linda Byers said that would be feasible. We never heard back from the commissioners on that proposal and two days later, the commissioners decided that we are gonna take it back and we're gonna use it for municipal purposes. Can you tell me, first off, why we never got a response to our proposal and secondly, you know...
No, I can't, Rich, in all honesty, because I really don't know. I'm not trying to be smart with you, but I really don't know. And to be honest with you, I don't friggin' care about it because we're in a situation where we need to move forward and not look back where we've been.
That situation right there would've, wouldn't have cost the taxpayers any money as it is costing now with the township paying the bills on it because the money would've came from PTAR because it would've reduced our annual membership fees. I, I just don't, you know, not, now, now it's, the township has it and, you know, what, a month ago or so, it comes up in the paper that all of a sudden, this, this, this is a big issue, that we wanna get this, get this rolling, get it rolling when we wanted to get it rolling, but, you know, you guys said that we're taking it back, we're gonna, we're gonna make it work.
Are you willing to go forward, Rich, or you wanna talk about the past?
I, I just, I don't matter.
I mean, I, as I said at my start, there, there was perhaps some miscommunication, there may have been some egos that got in the road. I'm not here to defend anyone. I'm here to say, listen, can't we go forward and how can we best do that?
Okay, Larry, I'm gonna make a suggestion. I like your proposal about three and three. I think that makes a lot of sense. And Dr. Harris sitting in the middle, but not a voting person, three and three. Could you put something like that in writing that you went to us and we can discuss and I could ask who on this board would wanna serve?
Love to.
Committee, okay?
Love to.
Send that, please, to Dr. Harris and we will, our information meeting in January, we'll go around the table and see if our three volunteers, which discussed with three township commissioners and what they wanna do. And I think that'd be fair to everybody and, and Dr. Harris sitting right in the middle of it and he can also be like...
We would probably have our township manager and two commissioners as...
Well, okay, you know, whatever you, whatever you think.
Because I think that if it was Dr. Harris or his designee and, and school board members and or commissioners, you got at least one person who's reachable, shall we say?
Yeah, that's correct. But I, this is why I can think anybody that really has a pain like Mr. Nemec just mentioned right now, you know, he wanted to be on it to serve an act committee to express his side, you know, somebody's more favorable, however, it comes out. I think that, to put it in writing and we'll get it back to you in writing, this way we know everything is documented.
Right.
And there's no, there's no six-month gap like we have right now.
Right.
And that'll eliminate that.
Right. It's, because the whole thing is, let's try to find a way to make it happen.
I, I do agree with you, okay? Because I wanna put that on tax rolls myself, all right? But I just think it, there, there's been some miscommunications. I think the best way of doing that, put it in writing, it's right in the holiday season now, but starting in the beginning of next year, I think we could see who was interested in volunteering, we'd go from there.
Works for us, we'd love to do that.
Put it in writing and please address to Dr. Harris.
And it'll be forthcoming.
Okay.
One question. Are you made, are you people debating to do this? Is it, are you five commissioners?
Well, we have two commissioners and, and the township manager.
Township manager, so that won't be...
So it definitely won't be a four, how many, three commissioners?
No, there's five commissioners.
Two commissioners and the...
Two and a township manager.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Rich, I'm gonna try to, I'm just saying, we can look back and we can all find a culprit or someone that maybe dropped the ball, but let's...
And I'll, and I'll be honest with you, I'm kind of, I'm kind of a little upset because I understand you wanted to get it rolling, would like to get it rolling too, but instead, nobody approached the school board about getting it rolling. It came out in a public meeting, it was, it was in the paper that, and it, and it'd be honest with you, it, it read like we're the stumbling, the school board's a stumbling block in it. And I, that, that, I took, I took that to heart.
Well, the papers here, if there was any, you know, if there was anything that needs to be corrected, I can guarantee you, there was no, there's no commissioner that wants to in any way delay or move, not move forward. And there hasn't been for the last nine months or so. I can guarantee you that.
It would've been, it would've been nice to hear from the commissioners, you know, approaching Dr. Harris or I was board president at the time, me, me myself, instead of having to get the information in the paper that, you know, this is, you're trying to get this going again, that's, that's...
No. I'm not even gonna go, you know, I'm not gonna go back because it doesn't do any good.
Just put it in writing and then we'll, you'll get things rolling, okay?
Thank you very much. Happy Merry Christmas. Happy New Year to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Actually, I have a couple of things for Dr., because I have my ass, I'm sorry. Dr. Trey has, this is my brief at this stage.
This is, this is results of six weeks ago at the conference and it happens once a year. I'm gonna go through the ball cover, you can read it on your own. There were thirty initiatives on educational projects and performance that were produced at this conference at Hershey. Thirteen of them seem to be innovative. You can read through them and look at them, we shared the information. I said in each of the thirteen sessions out of the thirty and I, and I shared the information with Adam, passed it on as he felt was appropriate. But the key, really, only thing really to talk about briefly and reference down the line, there were five educational sessions that I thought were, it's on the first page, I thought were somewhat worthwhile for us long-term. Two of them, that would be capital game, capital campaigns in Williamsport area school district and the Conestoga Valley school district. They're really to the forefront of trying to generate income to take away from taxpayer expense in their own districts. Williamsport's been able to maintain a community process by which they're able to promote capital funding, capital campaigns. Right now, they're paying out a local effort basically for a two-point-seven million dollar stadium upgrade all because of the efforts they've done there. I have a list of the broad ways which they did that. At some stage, maybe we'll have to do that issue. Right along the other length, Conestoga Valley school district. Yes, sir.
Let me jump in, but you know, Dr. Harris and I serve on the community education foundation, which our, one of our goals is to generate funds. If you have those ideas, send them our way and we'll take them to our board for discussion.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
That'd be great. So that would be, Conestoga Valley's the second one on there and they got into the business community. So pass that idea on. So that's two out of the five. Another one dealt with pre-K partnerships. You never can tell where we are at some stage online as we evolve with our educational effort. Your public schools are trying to do something, they're partnering with colleges, that's a growing trend at this particular stage and it's something we could, could look at. They took a pre-K program and negotiated with the Association on Teaching Capabilities and they were able to take a half-day pre-K program. First, they created a pre-K program, then a half-day pre-K program they're able to pay for as a full, full-day program to support their entire educational program. That improves student readiness, excuse me, student readiness and also performance. That was, that was the second category. The last two were, we've always been skeptic about the, about the, our student profiles the state requires. So we had the experts from Penn State, that was the Center for Public for Evaluation Educational Policy, and they did an overview of the profile and they tore it apart as far as its value, meanings, its general interpretation, identified all the areas where they had problems with it purely from a statistical perspective and its value and its arbitrary nature. So you can take a look at that if you wish. It's a good defense mechanism for those of us beaten up by a, by a profile that is questionable. The last thing was the Pennsylvania Early Education Inventory, this came out of PDE. It's a massive structure. It's put together to tie together kindergarten readiness and pre-K readiness. And both instruments are well-created, they deal with some, some like thirty key indicators and it's there available to districts. The only problem with it is that there is data collection we owe the state. If we pass it on to the state, what may happen with that data is somewhat problematic. I'm not sure how that could be used for us or against us at this stage. But there's another tool which just come to the forefront of the last year, it's there, thought it'd be innovative. And that's it. The rest of the stuff you can look at, two and a half pages of material there about what went on and that's all I have to add.
Thank you. And we have two more quick points, one with our foundation. We are having a purse bash. It's so funny just announcing that. I learned more about purse bash than I have my whole entire life, but that's on January sixteenth, so please buy your tickets and look for information on our website as well as the foundation's website under penntrapperfoundation.org.
And I'll add to that, that's our major fundraiser for the year, so we appreciate those community support for. Every single dollar there that we earn goes right back into the school district.
Will you bring tickets to like maybe the next meeting or so?
I can bring tickets or...
That late?
You can buy them that night. We'd like to sell it before that.
No, 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 like our, our first meeting in January.
I'm sure Dr. Harris will get some...
I can bring some tickets. I can send out a question here, how many people want one? Absolutely. All right. And finally, I just wanted to thank the whole entire community for all the support they gave our football team. And this was a great event, it was a great season. Every week was more exciting than the week before, if that's possible, and it just led up to a great day at Heinz Field and it was just amazing to see all the green and gold in the stands. So I really think that was wonderful. I know we're, they just resports, Steve just gave me a copy at the game, which was great, this was the Pine Ridge game they did for resports, which was also dynamic, but it was fun. It was fun, the whole crowd, the bonfire, the great participation we had that night, every single thing, the assemblies, the things that they did at the high school, the elementary school, the middle school, all the teachers were awesome, so I really thank them and it was just great to see. It was truly proud just to be Penn Trapper for this time here.
I didn't know Dr. Harris was really into it. That's, that's good. That's very good.
Is it true that Coach Ryan had a baby like shortly after that game?
The next, you know, what he did, he had a baby girl the next day, so I sent him an email saying, well, you had your big win after all, so.
Yeah, I heard it like yesterday or the day.
I think that's his number four, I think.
Yeah, it is number four, yeah.
My blessing. All right, well, thank you. And I think after my long, long list, I do apologize.
All right. I'd like to entertain a motion for the trade report for the month of October to be approved and presented by an official minutes. So moved by Dallas. Now, your second motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cauchy.
Questioned.
In question, I'm a favor, signify by saying aye.
In question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Motion to approve the list of bills for the month of December?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Dissing.
Second.
Second by Mr. Neimick, question?
What?
Question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Old business, no old business, I discussed executive session, we'll go to new business. How about, Mr. Koschew?
Thank you, Mr. President, move to give permission to the indoor track team to compete in our state events, this, this will not require overnight stays.
All right, most, most, Mr. Koschew, any second motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kuchasik.
Question.
Question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Move to accept the following resignations, Paul Conrad, E.D. Director, Penn Traver High School, effective immediately, Tony Zimmerman, Volunteer Football Coach, effective immediately, and Perry Zoma, Volunteer Football Coach.
Motion by Mr. Koschew, second, Mr. Leonard, any question or motion?
Motion.
Question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Move to employ the following personnel, new employment is contingent upon the receipt of all necessary documentation, acceptance of Act 34-151 and 114 waivers from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania within thirty days, we have several folks for the Spring Musical, and a department chair at Language Arts, as listed below.
Second.
Next by Mr. Koschew, second by Mr. Kuchasik, question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Thank you, Dr. Koschew.
I apologize.
But, but, Mr. Kuchasik.
Thank you, Mr. President, move to approve the expenditures for the high school renovation project for the month of November two thousand fifteen, according to schedule as listed.
Motion, Mr. Koschew, any second motion?
Second.
Second, Mr. Neimick, any question?
Question.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Move to approve the following change orders, as listed and presented.
Motion, Mr. Koschew, second, Mr. Neimick, any questions?
Questions.
Question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Move to grant permission to advertise jointly with the WIU Joint Purchasing Consortium for purchase of supplies in the following categories, multi-purpose paper, unleaded gasoline, diesel fuel.
Motion, second, Mr. Koschew, any question or motion?
Question.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Move to approve the purchase of new equipment for the fitness center at the high school, and two new treadmills for Travers Gold, that cost a fifty-four thousand, one at eighty-four dollars and forty cents.
Second.
Second, Mr. Koschew, any question?
Question.
Question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
That's all I have this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Koschew, Bill Engrath, safety, Mr. Leonard?
I have no report, no business tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard, employee relations, negotiation, transportation, Ms. Dissing?
Nothing to report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Dissing, food service, Dr. Trey?
No, no report.
Okay, first on, Mr. Stovall.
I have a couple of things tonight, Mr. President, move to approve the list of additional substitute teachers and support personnel for the month of December two thousand fifteen, as listed in the appendix.
Uh, most, Mr. Stovall, second, Mr. Kuchasik, any question or motion?
Question.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Move to approve the following student-teacher assignments, Seagull University Cooperative Professional is Christie Giavinetti, her student teacher will be Melissa Kirkin for grade one, dates will be January twenty-fifth sixteen to March eleventh of sixteen, Cynthia Dut will be taking care of Melissa Kirkin in M.L. Science from three fourteen sixteen to four twenty-nine sixteen, and at Karla College, Jill Hawke will be taking the student teacher, Mackenzie McGuire, McGuire, or, for kindergarten from ten nineteen of fifteen to twelve eleven of fifteen.
Motion, Mr. Stovall, any second motion?
Second.
Second, Ms. Dissing, any question or motion?
Question.
All in favor, signify by saying...
We have a, we have a real...
Oh, your real question? Okay, good.
I thought Ms. Howe, Mrs. Howe, I'm sorry, was gonna be off next semester, is she taking a...
It's after, it's after December.
See the dates?
Yeah.
She's actually, we're kinda doing this after they've been here.
Retroactively.
Oh, okay. See the dates, it was actually October to December, it's a little bit retroactive.
Yeah, we had to make sure we got them in, Jimmy.
Okay, thank you.
We missed it, it was missed before.
Okay.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Move to approve the following leave requests, there are a few FLNOI leaves and an extension of an unpaid leave, as listed...
Uh, motion, Mr. Stovall, any second motion?
Second.
Second, Mr. Kuchasik, any question?
Question.
Question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Move to employ the following personnel, new employment is contingent upon the receipt of all necessary documentation, and the acceptance of Act 34-151 and 114 waivers from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania within thirty days, as listed below.
Motion, Mr. Stovall, any second motion?
Second.
Second, Ms. Dissing, any question?
Question.
Question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Move to approve the following termination, Lisa O'Connor, paraprofessional at Penn Middle School, effective December second, two thousand fifteen.
Motion, Mr. Stovall, any second motion?
Second.
Second, Mr. Leonard, any question or motion?
Question.
Question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Move to adopt the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen school calendar, as recommended by the superintendent, to make it a part of the official minutes, the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen school year will begin with an in-service day on Monday, August twenty-second, two thousand sixteen, and will officially terminate on June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. The last day of instruction for grades K through eleven will be Friday, May twenty-sixth, two thousand seventeen, unless it is become necessary to extend the school calendar because of weather conditions, emergencies, or other urgent reasons.
Motion, Mr. Stovall, any second motion?
Second.
Second, Mr. Neimick, any questions?
Questions.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Move to adopt the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen service employees calendar, and make it a part of the official minutes, calendar with two hundred and forty-eight working days and fourteen paid holidays makes the work year of two hundred, two hundred and sixty-two days, yearly employees will be paid for two hundred and sixty-two days, including paid holidays.
Motion, Mr. Stovall, any second motion?
Second.
Second, Mr. Kuchasik, Mr. Materazzo, let me give you a second. Any question or motion?
Question.
Question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
That's all I have tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Stovall. Policy regulations, legislative talent, too, Mr. Materazzo.
Thank you, Mr. President, move to accept and file the minutes of the superintendent's information committee meeting held on Monday, November second, two thousand fifteen.
And motion, Mr. Materazzo, any second motion?
Second.
Second, Ms. Leonard, any questions?
Question.
Question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
I'd like to move to appoint the following recreation board representatives, the Penn Township Rep., Mr. Philip Kuchasik, and Dr. Scott Cosco, Trafford Borough Rep., Mr. Nick